Hey, want to go over the January 14 meeting of the best committee of planning and commission? If we need to move flag. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have roll call.
Commissioner Wyler.
Here.
Commissioner Cohen.
Here.
Commissioner Romo.
Here.
Commissioner Spain.
Here.
Commissioner McNair.
Here.
And Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Noted on vacancy.
Hey, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of our last meeting?
I'd like to make the correction to the minutes on the adjournment part, last portion, that the regular scheduled planning commission meeting will be held at 7:00 PM on Tuesday, October 19th should be developed there at 20:00.
Do you want the correction to the motion?
I'll make a motion to add minutes with that correction.
Second. Written communication.
Yes, thank you Chair, there are two pieces of information that were submitted that are not actually go up pertaining to a Genoa I and G2. In the course of discussions this evening, the commission members should afford enough opportunity to review correspondence before rendering.
Thank you. How about future neighborhood meeting?
None specific I can account for, but the community advisory groups continue to be meeting on an online basis. A specific online community advisory group, a hub of information has been posted online through the state's public website, so if any interested party can.
Go to the website.
See when those meetings are being done.
Thank you. Does anybody in the audience wish to speak about something that's not on tonight's agenda? Seeing none, we're right to public hearings, G1, before we start, does anybody have anything to disclose? Seeing none. Conditional use permit and grading exemption, PHG 19-005/ENB 19-0003.
Good evening commissioners, this is I O G point one, and it's an initial use permit and grading exemption for a new assisted living and memory care facility on a property within the Mount Escapador specific plan. And the general designation for this site is SBA five, which corresponds to the North Escapador specific plan, zoning is also SP. You can see most properties in the area are either part of SBA five, so the same specific plan, or SBA twelve, which I believe is the east road to the specific plan. I have a map of the full specific plan, there are five planning areas. The project site is red at the bottom, within planning area number four. Most of the planning area number four is either modified or natural open space, but residential uses are permitted on the project site. And there are also several conditionally permitted uses allowed on the site, one of which includes homeless homes. Node element is allowed on any slopes over 25%, which does apply to the use of the portion of the project site. And we have the area of the site, it's composed of three lots, total the area is 3.31 acres, and a proposed commission of approval to do a lot of higher ground surface. And we have a site plan, there are two driveway, excuse me, driveways onto the project site, one of the stoplights corner on the Old Hoop Hill Great Road, and one of the other these corner off the Lenny Trails. Those two access points will continue through the project, though the driveway off of Lenny Trails, which is a slight loopie, so that it will align with the driveway toward the Valley Highway across the street. And there will be 21 park foot spaces for employees and visitors of the facility. So for grading, our grading ordinance limits cuts focused on height 20 feet, and the inclination was 21. There is a small gradient in orange on the side of the property that would be up to 26 feet tall, and have an inclination of 1.51, so a grading exemption is included for the proposal. The rating figures also show three viral exemption bases, one within the North East Corner, one along the North West Corner, and then the smaller family and stoplights corner. For the, speaking of the North East Gateway, the specific plan has a planning areas that probably started to hold the bulk of their maintenance home, so the product is set up in the next year, which will show the ground floors as a consistent with that. Up the windows line, the size of the facility will be 76 feet out this way, from the four floors, around four with lobbies, and we will see on the next few slides of the floor plans, four floors. And three levels above that, where the units will be located, will get some with 78 units, 99 beds, so some of those will have a different bed. And there's a variety of recreational and social activities for the residents, including the center, gator, salon, active rooms, a dining room with a bar, and a central courtyard, which is pictured in this picture. So for the ground floors and furniture area, there are two offices, separate lobbies for assisted living, right here, offices, office room, and service service room, which bring a trash room, and will not be a separate trash collection for the site. First floor is directly above the ground floor, and will continue towards second assisted living area. Second floor, the assisted living area, is part of the regular area. And on the top floor, there will be called assisted living area. So all of the memory care rooms will be on the second floor. And the gallery, so we can see what the building will look like, will incorporate stucco, and mostly off white and sand colors, stone near accents in some areas, timber trims, decorative lighting. And we have worried the sheriff, they've got the drop off of visitors and residents, so that doesn't happen in the parking lot. Some of the amenities are therefore floors, will be appointed on patios and balconies, so there will be opportunities for outdoor activities in locations in addition to the foyer. And there's our additional elevations for the east, south, and west side of the building. So for the California Environmental Act, initial study draft of the G A N X of deforestation released from public review from labor force to the subject for March 19th. The document provides high potential impacts for biological resources, cultural and agricultural resources, geology soils, and mandatory mines and significance, but for our mitigation mandate, propose to reduce all impacts to less than 5% level. No comments received from the public for other agencies during this review period. And the final initial study in G A N X of deforestation, issued January 3rd, 2020. For public involvement, I'm also attending for the doc, and the decision to advance of the public review period. Copies of that notice, and copies of the document itself, were provided to the sharing house for the U X A agencies. And in addition to that, public hearing, notice was mailed to me was in advance of this sharing house, separate area. And again, no comments received from the public for other agencies in response to this process. And our recommendations to approve PHG 19-0015 for the proposed plans of division of approval, and adopt the final G A N X of deforestation.
Thank you. Does anybody have questions to add?
Um, you know, by frankly, I don't have personally any questions. The only, just one out of curiosity, and it's on the, looks like, one of the conditions in regards to the oak trees that are going to be planted offsite. Why are they planted offsite as opposed to off site?
Actually, I have a slide that kind of explains the tree situation a little bit better. They are moving 26 oaks, 22 of those qualified mature, 4 tend to just die under, both half year corrected, but one, whatever, oaks. Four of the oaks are perfected, so the grade will tend to just die under, and those required to be more compressed and definitely close. So they need 30 oaks, basically, to plant it somewhere. The landscape plan is provided, how you know, can show only 10 escape that are back, so we need to find a place for the 20 additional oaks. And if you want to leave them on site, we do allow offsite replacement, and this petition kind of explains the terms, if you have to monitor agents or, I think it's easier.
Okay, where, potentially where these would be located, I mean, would these go in public parks, or do they go?
Most likely, I believe we're looking at the last name of this district, or the park, it would have the municipality limits, yeah.
Alright. Anybody else have a question?
Just one quick one, why was the first floor called this? So, so it's kind of a free throw.
Yeah, the advocate might be better easily answer that, I believe because it's a partial park, you know, it's not as large as the upper three, it's kind of where you enter the building, where it is the upper floors, and where most of the daily, you know, where the people live, and where the daily activities take place, and we just want to refer to it as a basement, you know, technically it's not underground, and you can see it from, yeah.
Okay, if there are no other questions, thank you so much. Going to open the public hearing, we have two speaker slips. I know you said we didn't want us in need, but Joe, I'll ask, I'll ask as an architect. Does anybody have any questions?
Good evening, commissioners, Chair, I will get to the question you asked in just a minute, I'll just be very brief, and try to provide a quick overview of the project. So, first off, I think she did a terrific job working with us, and various other people in engineering, and various staff, and she went through a lot of issues to make this project hopefully be successful, and we think that, she did a great job, and I'm thankful for that. Secondly, I'd like to also explain a couple things about the client, Chindu Patel, he is a resident of Escanito, he loves Escanito, he's done at least one project, which I was architect in Escanito, and he's looked at countless sites in Escanito, saw more Robert, saw more Harshing, and saw more Foley at Ida. And many of those, I said, you know, let's look at it, and several we had meetings with staff to discuss the liability of it, some I said walk away, and some I said run away. But when I saw this project, I took one look at it, and I knew that he wanted to do an assisted living and memory care facility, and I said, Chindu, this is perfect, this is a perfect site for this building. And so what I meant by that was that it's set far up on site, it's a challenging site, it's got rocky in the back, it's got protected open space, it's got fairly steep, great that we need to work with, which is all fine, but at the end of the day, the building is set so far back, it will have such a stately and beautiful presence from, that I think it will really anchor the east end of Escanito, and I think it will have a timeless presence, at least I'm certain of that. But more importantly, from the inside of this building, this is the kind of place where you would feel at least some level of comfort or pride to have your mom or your dad, because it sits up on this hill, it's got these beautiful views to the west and to the north, it looks into this courtyard, it's going to be heavily landscaped, and it's large, it's not a token courtyard, and on the other side, it's against really beautiful and charitable eucalyptus tree, I mean, I don't know, hopefully, most of those will stay there for a long time. So, we specifically designed the outdoor dining areas, outdoor plazas, views out of every single unit in the building, and that was quite a challenge to us. Now, to get to your question, Commissioner, the, the, the first floor of the building was, it is technically classified as a basement, because the backside of it is, three of the four sides are basically under, a subterranean, they're under the courtyard, but we had to do it, because we had very functional tie-in points all around the site, we had to, as a condition of engineering and agreements that had, and we worked out, provide not only access from Old Huayto, which is the road to the south of the property, but we had to accommodate for its future expansion sometime in the future, maybe never, but maybe in 10 years or 20 years. So, that was a tight point, we had another access point off the Lenny Trails, we have A B A circulation, truck circulation, and we also didn't want to be digging into a rocky hillside anymore than we had to. So, there were a lot of things that went into the decision-making of that, and it was really the best and only solution that we could come up with, probably, maybe looked at Doug's, or maybe, maybe even more solutions to how to make the building circulation work. Assisted living buildings are somewhat tricky, because memory care is a sad thing, but it's an important part of the building, but access control and overall egress is extremely highly monitored, so you just can't have people walking in and out of on lobby, and the only way we can functionally service the building is functional requirements, service requirements, electric rules, the trash, the food delivery, access to assisted living and access to memory care is to set it up in this way. And then last, I'd like to just explain this to everyone here, some of you may know, some of you may not, but this particular gorgeous building that you're all in was designed by a good friend of mine many, many years ago, and he was killed many, many years ago in a commercial jet accident, where the pilot flew a suicide mission into the ground. So, everyone here should be thankful that they have such a timeless and gorgeous facility, because this has been here for 25 years, and it's going to be here another 100 years. Anyway.
Thank you.
I make myself available for questions, I also have Rob Lamar, a civil engineer here, if you have any technical questions.
Does anybody have any questions? Does anybody have any technical questions for the civil engineer? Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing.
I really liked it, so thank you, I think you did a fabulous job with, you know, what you were up against, trying to build it on this site, looks like a tough site, and I think architecture is going to be really good, and I'm looking forward to seeing this built. I understand, due to my own personal experience, how memory loss cares, and of course, the thing for the city, and its citizens, as well as the assisted care, I think it's something that, that the city needs, and I'm in full support of having this type of facility at this location, I think it's a good project.
I echo your words 100%, I, as soon as I saw it, I liked the, liked the looks of it, and I also am aware of memory care going through right now with my mother, and it's certainly something that we need to see more of as we, and this property, looking out over Ryan Park, and up over Eureka Springs area, the Talbot, and Forts Valley Center, it's more of a luxury resort than it is a retirement center, but it's perfect.
I'm drive by, I'm on the way today, so, I, I support it, I think it adds a big addition to the neighborhood surrounding there, and I think it'd be a cool.
Give everybody some brief, like, motions. Right, I move to approve PHG 19-0015, ENB 19-0003. I'll second. We have six yes votes, so, PHG 19-0015/ENB 19-0003. Here, we're going to go on to item G2, appeal zoning administrator decision, PHG 19-0051.
Let me ask, good evening Chairman, and Commissioners, my name is Darren Parker, Associate Fireman with the City. Item being presented this evening is an appeal of a decision by the zoning administrator to approve a request for a minor condition use permit, to install and operate a ATNT small cell wireless communication facility, also known as node in the public rightway. The subject site, or the general plan I should say, is urban one, and the zoning of the property is R110. The subject site is located on the north of Vintage Place, just west of Valhalla Drive. ATNT is requesting a minor condition use permit to install and operate a small cell wireless facility mounted onto a city street light pole located in the public rightway of Vintage Place, adjacent to 2094 Vintage Place. The area is surrounded by residential homes on all sides, as you can see in the picture over there, the picture on the left, the photograph from the top right corner shows you the, or a photograph of what the existing pole looks like today and the location. The project is proposed on the north side of Vintage Place, just between two single family residential homes. The proposed street light is approximately 30 to 40 feet to the nearest residence. The street light pole will, will be replaced with a new light pole, will be located in the public rightway behind the sidewalk. The illustration on the left in the red shows the location of the proposed pole. The, the request is to replace the existing street light pole with a new 27-foot tall street light pole, and to mount one canisher type antenna that affixes on top of the light pole, and to install four radio units mounted vertically onto the side of the pole. The new street light pole would, would still function and operate as a standard city street light, and would be equipped with a new LED fixture. The new street light would be in performance with the city design standards for mental street light, lighting. Visual impacts of, of, of the proposed facility would minimize by incorporating a stealth design, stealth type design into the street light. Additional associated equipment would be placed in the small new underground concrete vaults, or what's called a handhole, next to the street light pole. S G G N E would bring power to a handhole near the pole, and conduit from the handhole to, to the pole. The illustration or, or the simulation drawn on the left shows what currently existing in the top left, and on the right, or on the bottom right shows the simulation drawn, what it would look like when it's installed. As you can see, the proposed canisher type antenna is on the top of the pole, and the four radio units are just below the pole, or, or, or below the antenna. The proposed canisher type antenna that will be affixed on top of the light pole would be approximately 24 inches tall, 10 inches in diameter. The, the proposed four radio units that will be mounted vertically onto the pole, that will be painted to match the pole, is approximately seven, 7.8 inches wide by 4.13 inches deep by 7.8 inches long. Purpose of the small cell node would allow ATNT to provide coverage to areas of Escanito and other areas very difficult or impractical to cover using traditional large and macro wireless health communication facilities. It would also provide ATNT enhanced voice and data coverage to, to the surrounding area where there is currently a need for additional service and capacity. Wireless service provided by this antenna would include mobile phones, wireless broadband, emergency nine mobile, data transfers, electrical email, sorry, electronic, electronic email, internet web browsing, wireless application, wireless mapping, video streaming. The reasons that uphold the zoning administrator decision of approval is that the project, as proposed, adequately meets the city design standards, and does meet the intent of the communication antennas ordinance, and the general principles. Federal law prohibits cities from considering RF emissions as a basis for denying or regulating wireless facilities if the applicant has demonstrated that proposed wireless facility applies with FCC RF emission regulations. The applicant submitted RF study compliance certification that certifies that the proposed small cell antenna conforms to the federal communication RF safety compliance requirements. In October of last year, and in 2019, the zoning administrator approved the project. The project is category exempt from environmental review in performance with SEQA Section 1303. Staff is recommending denial of the appeal and upholding the zoning administrator decision to approve the minor initial use permit, that concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions, staff? Seeing none, we'll open the public hearing, and Kevin McGee.
Good evening, my name's Kevin McGee with ATNT, with offices in San Diego. ATNT agrees with the staff recommendation and the zoning administrator decision to deny the appeal and support the project, as noted by staff, the project's exempt from SEQA, and meets all the city's wireless code requirements and guidelines. Just a little background, maybe referred to some of these numbers before, but approximately 72% of Americans today rely primarily on wireless phones for their communication. Approximately 70% of all E911, or E911 calls are initiated on wireless phones. Since the introduction of the iPhone in 2007, seems like, recently, ATNT has estimated that the use of mobile data has increased on our network anyway, by 360,000% of people using data phones. All of this results in demand of capacity on, on a wireless provider's network. So, small cell facilities, such as one proposed tonight, is a way to deal with and upload the network, to add capacity to our network, and deal with the issue. Now, the small cell facilities are a low-powered, low-profile solution that can address this capacity. With regard to the appeal, primarily based on our own safety, ATNT takes the With regard to the appeal, primarily based on RF safety, uh, ATNT takes the issue of RF safety very seriously. One of the reasons is that we can actually lose our license if we're not in compliance with the FCC maximum permit, permissible exposure laws. In addition, there can be extensive fines. Mentioned by staff that ATD did submit an RF safety compliance letter that states that certifies that we comply with the FCC regulations. And what we found in other sites that we deployed and other reports that we've done is that typically these operate at five percent less of the levels that we can operate that's allowed by the FCC. It's a very low power. These signals are similar to what you experience with Wi-Fi, this signal goes out about three hundred, three hundred degree radius. Um, in the past twenty-five years, RF energy on human exposure has been studied by a variety of entities and, and agencies. One of the comments made in the letter about the fox watching the hen house, I mean, I kind of actually can appreciate that. Someone coming up here like myself from ATNT saying everything is great, I can appreciate it. Uh, but with that said, a lot of these agencies that have basically concluded, what we're saying here tonight is that there's really not been any scientific evidence through these studies that can link any health risks to humans by exposure of RF energy, and notwithstanding this, the levels we're talking about here. Some of these agencies are the FCC, FDA, CDC, US Environmental Protection Agency, the World Health Organization, the American Cancer Society, National Cancer Research Institute, Institute of Electrical Electronics Engineers, and a few others I'll, I'll mention. So based on that, we're looking for your support and recommend taking action to follow the zoning administrator decision of approval of the project after denial of the next appeal. Thank you. I'm available for any questions.
I've got a question. Thank you. I'm sure you looked at also various other locations, why this particular location?
Right, so we actually, uh, we drive, uh, in Escondido, it's an area of the city that has a lot of demand on that area. When you look at where we have existing micro or macro facilities, if you will, cell towers, traditional cell towers, um, there, for, I think, for the area, we don't have as many macro sites as we need, so we're going to try to pull out the areas, like you mentioned, through the small cell facilities. We drive every street in Escondido, we're driven every street and collect the data on how much usage there is. One of the reasons is that there's demand from our customers on the street. And the reason that we're placing it where we are on the street is we want it to be, typically, the, the code of the city encourages that you locate on existing facilities. I know this one, we're replacing the pole, so it's moving a little bit. But you might have noticed in the aerial, from, that was shown by staff, is that it's in the middle of the street, so it's where there is an existing pole. And as I mentioned, the signal goes out around three hundred foot radius, by being in the middle of the street, that can cover that block of, of the most part of the location. So basically, the need was the first, and then the spot on the street is to cover that house.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So just to be clear, excuse me. Just to be clear, is it three hundred foot radius, is that correct? For the coverage?
Approximately three hundred, yes.
Approximately, yeah, probably.
Uh, I'd probably go to the three twenty, but that's the, I'm just curious, because I hear approximately, that's around here.
Um, so basically, you're talking that this cell tower basically served just that street?
Yes.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Oh, I, I knew I had one for the question. Does this have anything to do with the 5G coming out? Are you planning on using this facility for 5G in the future?
This proposal's for 4G. Uh, it would be, I don't have any 5G projects in Escondido currently, but certainly with the fact that there's power and fiber that would be bringing for this, it would be one that we would look at, to assess 5G in the future, which then would require, uh, another process.
Okay, just to clarify, where the placement of this antenna is just for Vintage Place, basically, because of the, the need for that? And I can see if you're looking at a three hundred, three hundred twenty foot radius, if you moved it one way, somebody on the street's not going to get the coverage. If you move it the other way, somebody on the other side is basically not going to get it, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any questions?
Thank you so much.
And Charles Pack.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner. My name is Charles Pack. I'm a resident, original resident of Vintage Place, where their development was put in about twenty, almost twenty years ago. Our house is located kind of diagonally across the street, about a hundred feet from where this pole, this pole was going to be placed. The picture that Mr. Parker put up there shows our neighbors at twenty eight, twenty eighty-eight on the left, you can't see twenty nine four on the right. But I have to tell you that when I wrote my original appeal, my focus was on the radio frequency emissions concerns, health concerns. And at the time that I wrote my original appeal of this, I was unfamiliar with the Federal Communications Act, which I'm not familiar with. But I was focused on the hazards to my neighbors, which are across the street. The pole is going to be placed thirty feet from that second floor of the door. There's a two-year-old that lives in that building. And while I understand that there have been, um, many, many studies that our ATNT representative presented indicating that there are no concerns with RF radiation emissions, I can assure you that, that is, there are as many studies that contradict that as there are studies that support that. As a matter of fact, I'm the one responsible for inundating you all with some five hundred, six hundred pages of technical and medical documentation that I hope you take away. I do understand now that the Federal Communications Act of nineteen ninety-six vastly limits what you folks can do in terms of denying applications for these special amount of additional use permits. As I said, I was unaware of that at the time of my final appeal, so I'm going to focus not on that. I'm not going to respond to the comments that the gentleman from ATNT stated about there being no studies. You have those studies, I think you do that information. What I would like you folks to focus on is the other element of damage that could happen to all of us on that street, and that is the appreciation of our property values. For most folks, a residence, a home is the largest annual investment that we have. And in our case, that is our permanent home. It's very, very difficult to do research where you can quantify what damages would be to property values based on cell phone installation, cell phone tower installation. I understand that. Uh, but I did find one study that was included in the document that I've left for you today that you should have in front of you. It's a twenty fourteen survey that was conducted by the National Institute for Science Law and Public Policy out of ATD. That study was, or that survey was entitled Neighborhood Cell Towers and Antennas: Do They Impact Property's Desirability? From that survey of one thousand respondents, an overwhelming majority, ninety-four percent of those respondents reported that cell towers and antennas in a neighborhood are on a building would impact their interest in a property and the price they would be willing to pay for that property. In addition to that, out of those one thousand respondents, seventy-nine percent of them stated that under absolutely no circumstances would they ever purchase or even rent a property within a few blocks of a cell tower or a cell tower antenna. I included on the, on the, the URL, the website that you used to take a look at. It is possible for a planning permission in a city municipality to deny an application for cell tower. Again, I went to a website, Andrew Cameron Ellin Associates, he's in New York, Eric in New York, and I'm going to quote what his website states. Quote, "The United States Department of Appeals for the Eleventh Circuit upheld the denial of the cell tower application based upon testimony of residents and a real estate broker that the tower would reduce the values of property which were in close proximity to the tower," as they quote. I think I'll close by a couple of comments. I know that the gentleman from ATNT, I'm sure remember his name, commented that they have looked at alternative placements. If you look at our, our development, there's thirty-seven homes on Vintage Place to the southwest of that, this hillside. There's water towers, telephone poles, all other places that you also can replace where the cell towers can be placed that are not in that kind of proximity to a residence. On the north side, you have all the powder roads and additional hills. We're basically surrounded on three sides by hills. I should also point out that we, at one time, my wife and I did subscribe to ATNT, we used our internet service from ATNT. It was difficult to receive. We now have Cox from internet, we now have Verizon for our cell phone, and we have no difficulty with reception, usability in either case. That's no, not meant to be discredit on ATNT. But obviously, there are, there are alternatives, and we would ask respectfully that you folks take a look at maybe some alternatives, asking ATNT to help with some different ideas about where they can place these, uh, this particular tower. My fear is that down the road, as was addressed by your questions earlier, we may be looking at a 5G tower there. And that presents, from a scientific standpoint, a whole new set of risks to the people that live on that 5G. I did not include any of that in the documentation that I sent you. Radio frequency radiation is not my expertise. In my former life, I was a state of California certified weapons of mass destruction instructor which included nuclear stuff, it's ionizing radiation, which is something totally different. So I'm a little bit out of my league when I talk about RF radiation, but we do have concerns with that. Again, I realize that you are limited, and your deniability for such projects, but I would ask that you at least explore some other options, give us some more time, maybe find a way to determine what property damage in terms of our values of our property that we could incur, and rather than other placement of that tower.
Thank you very much for your time.
You dare it.
Thank you. I have one more question. Judy Backstew, Steve?
Hi. My name is Judy Backsted, and I live in the property directly above the red dot in the, in your photograph, and, um, Mr., I'm sorry, I forgot his name, Chuck, wait.
No.
Chuck mentioned that we are in a canyon with a very steep hillside on, on both sides of that canyon. I have lived in that property since nineteen seventy-three, and I can tell you there is a desperate need for this node. It's not a cell tower, it's a node. Or not, all of the, the arguments that Chuck quoted seem to be about cell towers, you know, which are considerably larger than a twenty-four inch canister, which I don't think is going to be unsightly at all, I doubt that anybody would even see it. That I live, I don't, I cannot get Cox, so they will not, they will not bring cable to my house. So I'm dependent on DSL from, from ATNT, and I get a fifty-six dollars a month for five megabits of speed on my DSL, which goes out regularly. I have had both, I currently have ATNT DSL service, I've also had Verizon, and they both are lacking greatly. And it, we just can't get service from any cell towers anywhere. And I am very much in favor of this. I'm, I'm not sure why there is such concern about, about radiation from this when we are living under high tension power lines that I think personally are much greater handicap and risk than, than a, a node. So, um, I just wanted to say that I disagree with the appeal. And I am very, I was at the original planning permission meeting along with about seven or eight other neighbors, and we were all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this?
Okay, seeing none in closed public hearing, open for Commissioner.
First of all, Charles, you've, you've done a lot of research, I think that's correct. A lot of the research that you did is dated from pretty far back. And the way that, the way that we're society is moving forward with cell usage, cell phones, as, as Kevin may have mentioned, this is going to pop up everywhere, and it's not a, it's not a cell tower as you stated it is, as a canister or a proper pole. I don't see where that's going to lower anyone's property value. I also don't see ATNT putting up something that's going to potentially harm the people that they're trying to get service from. So I, with all that, I don't have a problem supporting the denial of the appeal to have a hold of the zoning decision.
Any other?
Our heads are tied tremendously. We've had this discussion before. And it's frustrating that we're extremely limited as to how we move forward with this. Some of the questions that I have as I read your, your information, your letter, did the properties go down? And I'm not seeking for an answer, I'm just thinking. Did the property values go down? Because it was a cell tower that I saw which a few years back, I remember were absolutely terrible. The description, the picture with the description here that I saw certainly doesn't seem to be that, and, um, it's, uh, wouldn't seem, I think most people probably wouldn't even notice that. So I'm trying, I'm trying to see where there's a, there's a correlation there of lowering the property taxes with what is currently being proposed to, to put up there in, in the area. That was another question I had, what year was the study's done? I see the fourteenth of the survey, uh, what was it that it went before the Court of Appeals? Were some of the questions that I had? And then there was the cell towers, the cell tower. I have friends that have been impacted health wise because of that. But they just were not allowed to be able to make the decision based on that. I just wonder if it's in regard to the survey, if it's more of an eyesore that we're looking at, and that's what brought the property values down. I would encourage you to continue to push the issue, because if it does bring your property values down, at least there's something that you have, some recourse that you have. But at this point, I, I, I find it difficult to find that correlation there. But thank you so much, I really appreciate you bringing it, because I was not aware, I was not aware of that, of your information, and I think that is something important that you should take into consideration, of all this. Thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
One question.
Have I got a cellphone in my pocket giving my exposure radiation more than it did with the tower?
I don't know if I can answer that question with the correct answer. I want to, I think I said yes, because he was right next to me. They're very low power coming down through your bone, but I think if you asked our engineers, we'd have a whole big conversation, you know, I think they'd say, yeah, we can get more energy through the bone, next to your body, especially as I like this. That's a non-official answer, I guess, but that's probably more of a anecdotal, that's kind of how I address your question.
I want to thank Mr. Peck for doing a lot of research. I'm sure it took a lot of time, and you know, I can certainly emphasize with your concerns about the radio frequency and the effects that may or may not have. I have a lot of the same concerns. We're bombarded all day long. We sit in front of our computers, I sit in front of my computer screen all day long, my computer sitting right next to me, my phone sitting right next to me. It's a constant bombardment of these radio frequencies. Actually, I have the concern. I personally don't know what the effects may or may not be. I'm sure studies are going to continue, and they're going to continue having studies and doing analysis and everything, especially as we go forward with this 5G. Unfortunately, we're in a spot right now where the FCC and the federal law say this is not one of the considerations that a local jurisdiction can make as far as the radial frequency emissions. Our hands are tied. It appears to me that when we do look at our zoning code, the things that we are able to control, it does meet the city standards, and staff has demonstrated as such, and so at this point, I'm not prepared to go against the staff recommendation of denying the appeal.
The challenge I have is this node here, excuse me, there's notifications in that application. Is that correct? I'm sorry. There was a notification of the cell tower being sent to the neighbor that I, yes, you know, was outside of this, we're going to, we're going to applications. And one neighbor showed up to say, I don't want it, and one neighbor showed up to say, I do want it, and the other 35, that's going to care. And so for that, with our hands being tied with the FCC and everything else, it appears to me that the other neighbor was either, A, one surface, or B, don't have concern with property value, there was a notification sent out, it wasn't a shame, considering the neighbors hearing from Mr. Peck, because I'm sure he did send out that information as well. So that's kind of the challenge I have, looking at this, I think, always, but based on property values and regulations, it's just about that.
Somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion, and I guess it would be a motion to support the staff recommendation to deny the appeal of PHG 190015.
Correct.
Correct. That would be the motion.
It's PHG 190051, not 15.
All right, I read that right. PHG 190051.
Two zero.
Let me see if I can get this right the third time. PHG 19 dash 0051.
We can dub it in if it's right.
Thank you.
Do you have a second?
I'll say.
And I just want to ask our attorney, in this instance, would we vote no, or would we vote yes to support the, uh?
Where I heard the motion, it was a yes to the U of T deny to settle the staff recommendation.
And Chair, if I may, the resolution is to deny the appeal, so approving the resolution as set forth in the staff report would be consistent with the motion.
Six yes votes. So we are denying the appeal of PHG 190051. We want the current business H1 modification to precise development plan in PHG 19 dash
Good evening, Chairman Span and members of the Planning Commission. Adam Finestone here, Principal Planner, with me Jasmine Brunovich, she's an assistant planner here with us. She's the planner who is our lead on the project here. The project before us, as you stated, is PHG 19 dash 0076. It's a modification of a precise development plan for the Gateway Grand Project to amend conditions of approval related to allow signage. The project is located at the former police department headquarters, it's in the downtown specific plan, specifically in the Gateway Transit District. It's directly across Valley Parkway from the Escudero Transit Center, addressed 700 West Brand Avenue. West Brand is to the south of Valley Parkway to the north, and the NCD rail line runs out just to the west of the site. The project was originally approved, a little background here, the project is under construction. It was originally approved in 2016 as a 126-unit multifamily apartment project. Conditions of approval were placed on the project at the time of approval, limiting signage to be monument and directional signage only, and we'll get into that in just a minute. That's what the request involves here. So as I said, the project is currently under construction. You'll see on the top here are some exhibits, or some images, some actual photographs of the site that it currently sits, maybe about two weeks ago is in this stage. They've been making a lot of progress on it. The elevations that you see below are representative of what is currently been approved by staff. There have been some modifications since the project was originally entitled, and they've gone through design review with the Planning Commission staff, and have got approval for the images here, or approximately. The colors that you see on the doors are not quite exact, it's tough to get a good representation of what color it is, but they're a little more muted than what you see there. The little key that's under the West Brand exterior, colors and materials are probably heading there, that's a little bit closer than what the images in the elevations are actually show, but still not quite exact, they're definitely a little bit more muted than you see. However, I will say that the elevations themselves are not subject to what we are discussing tonight, specifically related to the signage as we're getting to. This as well, just one more slide here with some images. These are renderings that the applicant has prepared for, I think, probably their marketing materials that are used necessarily, but they're up here. So this is the ultimate of what the building and project will look like. You can see on the top image above where that echo truck is, I think I can describe that, that is one of these blade signs that is subject to what our discussion is tonight. This bottom image is more looking into the interior of the site, it's just provided for context. So the current request is a request for modification to the precise plan with regard to signage. The applicant submitted a sign package that includes freestanding building and directional signs, and part of the building signage that's proposed are projecting signs that would serve as project identification. Due to certain stipulations and regulations in the downtown specific plan, a projecting sign on this building and any building where it may even be conceivably allowed within the downtown specific plan does require approval through the planning commission. So this request becomes a request to amend the precise development plan, which typically would be done through zoning administrator level, but in this case, due to the language in the specific plan, it requires planning commission approval. The table here shows certain sign standards that were at our, one, required or allowed in the development specific plan, and then those that are proposed as part of the project here. You'll notice that, at least for the wall signs, the number of signs proposed is within the limit, however, the signed square footage is beyond what would typically be allowed in the specific plan. However, it should be noted that these types of modifications can be approved as part of the precise development plan, which is what the intent is here. The other aspect is that the blade signs, as we had stated before, are the projecting signs, whatever you want to call them, and those are what's required, or what requires the planning commission approval. Other signs on the site include small ground-mounted monument signs, about 12 square feet, I'll show you images of those in just a second, and other typical directional and miscellaneous kind of identification signage locations, garage entrance, exit, leasing office, accessible parking signs, that kind of stuff. So those are all included in the overall sign package that the planning division received, and the blade sign is what we're looking to you for direction on or for approval for. Locations of the signage as shown here, you've got signs, both a monument and a blade sign at both, along both frontages. Valley Parkway, this is kind of what I think we all consider, at least from staff's perspective, we pretty much consider to be the main project entry, the transit center being up above the other side of the parkway there. So there's a blade sign posed on the building here, and monument sign nearby that's directional for the leasing office. Similar on the other side on Brand, the blade sign on the building, and then the leasing office monument sign down on the ground on the other side of the interstate, or the other side of the driveway instance. So the actual blade sign itself is proposed, it's a 48-square-foot blade sign, double-sided, illuminated, and it projects out from the building approximately four feet. I'll show you exhibits in just a second with elevations with that on there. And then just quickly, the ground-mounted monument, or I should say the project identification or entry monument signage, there are these leasing signs, 12 square feet illuminated and placed on the property as we saw on the previous slide. So the images here and the colors are not quite representative, so don't look at the doors and be scared. The image here, this is the building along Valley Parkway, this is the site that faces into the interior driveway there. So the Roman sign is the project is currently being branded as, or has been rebranded as, no longer Gateway Grand, or West Grand is it happened, probably before it's Roman. The sign here is visible as you're going along Valley Parkway, so Valley Parkway basically runs along this side of the building here. The area that it's adjacent to is part of the flex space that's not residential, it's just open area, and I think, I don't know exactly at this point what the intent is to use that space for, but I believe it's a high-ceiling, two-story or vaulted ceiling where there's not actually any ground area, floor area in that portion. This is the same sign right here, looking at it straight on from Valley Parkway, so again, this is the same commercial space. The other sign along Grand, this is looking at the building, looking, we're looking eastbound, I'm sorry, this is the east elevation, so we are looking west at the property. This would be the wall of the building that faces the driveway, and Grand is on this side here. And then on this one, this is facing the building from, looking at the building from Grand. You'll notice the sign location here, it's approximately, it's a little bit tough to see, but it's approximately six feet from this window here, and this is a residential unit, so in order to prevent any type of glare, nuisance issues, there have been conditions placed on the project that the illumination must be shut off during hours of, if it's 10:00 PM till dawn, so that would be some of what's required out of that time there. Staff recommends approval of the project by adoption of the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2002, 202002. Steve Stone, thanks. It would be approving a modification of the precise development plan for what was the Gateway Grand Project, amending the planning division conditions related to allowing signage. The Jasmine Brunovich with me here, as I said, and either of us would be available to answer any questions that the commission may have.
Thank you so much. I just have one question. When did it become rebranded as the Roman? When I saw the plans here, I thought, what are they talking about? What are they talking about? I think that's a big mistake. I think Gateway Grand, and just about anything but the Roman, I'm very disappointed in the name. But nobody asked us.
Yeah, well, we, I heard about it when they made the request to submit the obligation to sign package, I don't know where.
Well, I mean, the original project that we approved, when it started going up, I thought, that doesn't look like the project we approved. And then another floor, and I thought, that doesn't look at all like the project we approved. And then they put another floor on top of that, and I thought, where did this come from? I realized what we had approved originally looked like a modest project, and then all of a sudden, it improved and grew, and they got their state mandated bonuses and everything else, and there's nothing you can do but, now the name on top of it. I have no problem with the signs, but the name is disappointing. Any other comments or questions?
I don't understand. We're being asked to modify the plan for an apartment complex for a sign that belongs in a hotel. It's a projecting sign. Any other apartment complex wouldn't have a sign that's double in the square feet allowed overall that looks like something that belongs in a hotel. And I have a hard time amending the condition so that we, so that a project has changed multiple times already, and have, you know, signs that are double in size that don't, that don't match any bit of the criteria for the area. And so I just, I'm confused as to what the purpose is. In fact, it's illuminated, we have to shut it off at 10 o'clock, which half the earth basically deems it useless to be illuminated, and to project off a building that far, and frankly, to be 48 square feet, when you could have just stuck with a 30-square-foot sign that would have fit more in an apartment complex rather than what should be on a hotel.
Through the chair, if I may interpose. The city's police power regulating signs is limited to time, place, and manner, so the issues of the size and location is certainly within the commission's purview. There is content neutrality that the city has to follow, so whatever words they want to put on the sign is their prerogative, but the message has been received. Regarding the desired intent, it might be good to hear from the applicant if they choose to respond to that specific question.
Are there any other questions, staff? I'll just open it up. Are you the, Carolyn Hillgren?
Yes, evening. My name's Carolyn Hillgren. I am the Development Manager on behalf of the project owner. Apologies for the voice delay. So I guess to address the comment in regards to this sign maybe potentially belonging to a hotel, the designated time is actually for 18. Was down first I visited, you know, fourth quarter of last year, and I was sitting at the signal, I live at Spruce and Valor right there, and they were stopped, and they just sat there, and it, I've been a couple months since I've been down on site, and I just had this aha moment that this is the perfect building for a have just had this aha moment that this is the perfect building for a blade sign, and that their original proposed design of just a ground monument tower wouldn't necessarily capture the attention of those passing by, as we know, both Valley and Grand are thorough areas, and then out, people head fairly quickly down those roads, and so we really need something that catches people's attention before it's too late, and then of course, we're also fighting the long way roads on both sides, so just a little background line, the size of the signs is proposed from, we have signage design team, signage manufacturing team, and marketing team as well, so the dimensions proposed are what they feel is proportionate, and of course, the height, placement of up the ground, and how that just, and everything that's in relation to the exterior building designs, and the change in interior, so all of those are taken into consideration when finalizing the size, location, height, all the details that are used.
I guess, what type of traffic are trying to get in there? I mean, it's, it's quite evident, it's, it's probably going to fill up very fast, as every other one has, which is great, and I'm all for it, but what other traffic do you need to bring in by putting in something like this?
We're always looking for new tenants, I mean, we built the Alco project down the road, and honestly, biggest issue we had during our disimpotence there were identifying our project address, and because that's right off Center City Parkway as well, and I was zooming to get the freeway to Front Court, and it was kind of the same sort of howl there, and then in regards to the sign being lit up at night, that was also a lesson learned from the Alco project, and yeah, we would potentially have to, or we would have to turn off the lights between ten PM and dawn, but our reasoning for still wanting that light is we're trying to get commuters to the end of the day, and we recognize that this is such an ideal location, our marketing team has studied it, referred the group, just with all the freeway address it is, and, you know, everybody having a town, and whatnot, so it's, I can understand the comment about flying farther with the lit signage, but I will say it was a bit less than learned from the other project, and is something that we do feel is very important to this success of our lease-up. And of course, our lease-up efforts are contemplated within the first six months, but by the time all the buildings are filled, leases are already turning, and of course, our goal is to keep residents as long as we possibly can, but there's always going to be a partner to that, or to you.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a question, so you learned a couple of lessons on the Alco, how did this come about? Was it complaints from the residents of the layer coming off the sign? Is, is that what happened at the Alco, if I'm understanding?
No, no, it was the fact that people driving by, and they.
Okay, so it had nothing to do with the lighting?
No, it was the fact that we couldn't, they didn't know that we were.
I got it.
Ready to where our address was.
Okay. I guess one of my bigger concerns is, is going to be the glare that does come off the sign, especially for the, for the, you know, one, maybe two residences that are right, closest to the sign. You know, I wanted to make sure that, that if this doesn't end up going forward, you know, I don't want to have a problem caused. Is there another way to light the sign as opposed to having it shine out, maybe having lights shine towards it? Would that create less glare, so that we're not creating a problem? Or in staff's opinion, and now I've got a question of the staff, also, are we comfortable, is staff comfortable that we're going to be able to, to deal with this if there's complaints? You know, who's this going to fall on? Is it going to fall on property management, or is it going to fall on staff? I certainly don't want this to come back and become staff and a city issue, I'd much rather try and resolve this now as opposed to later.
Sure. And that's basically a lot of the reason why we have the conditions with regard to turning the illumination, and being turned off after hours. It's, I believe it's actually within our sign ordinance and/or our outdoor lighting ordinance, it requires illumination of signage to be switched off during, I think it says after either ten or eleven, or when, when the function which it, which it serves is no longer in operation, regardless, in this instance, it's serving a residential use and the potential nuisance from that glare, is there, so ten o'clock is what we put in the conditions to best serve that. I can also say that, two things with regard to what I would perceive operationally, is that I think that the property owner, landlord, man, the property manager has incentive to not create issues and nuisance issues for the tenant there, and beyond that, I think that the other aspect and the other side is that any tenant who's looking at that space knows there's a sign right there, and the sign was existing prior to their, their tenancy, so if it's nine o'clock and they're being, they're bothered by it, that's something that I think is probably an issue with the landlord or the property manager, but, you know, they're kind of pre-warm, it's not, for instance, like the car is facility, wasn't there any budget asking for this?
Sure, I, I, I get that, I know how people are though. Yeah, they complain because the airplanes are flying overhead, well, the airplanes are in there, so, it's still, but regardless, which, and I'm trying to get myself oriented here, so it's the south building elevation that has a residence right next to where the sign is, so is that the one that's on Grand?
Yes, the south building, that's the one that's facing Grand.
Okay, all right. So that's, that's the direction people are going to be driving, so that's the side. I was kind of hoping it might have been on the other side, and then, or you just turn the lights off on one side, then you don't have a glare issue, but that doesn't happen to be the case. Okay, all right, I don't have any further questions.
Through the chair, there are corrective measures in place with those conditions that says that if there are any complaints that the director receives, that they can request corrective action within fifteen days. So there is a plan in place, should there be some concerns about spill, spill over into that residential unit, because that is a veteran unit, but because of those, imposition of those conditions, the project applicant will likely make sure that that tenant is accommodated by some other means, whether it be shutters or something inside, I don't know, but it would be in their best interest to make sure that they are not negatively impacting that resident.
Is there no room for a larger monument instead of a flat block sign like that?
So we actually started with a larger monument concept, but as a contributor, we are, are continuing at that simple, they just didn't feel that it was, I guess, attention or anything enough, they also thought that this is more of a active design feature. It's something that I will say just company-wide, is a signage design that they are looking to implement across the province, you know, the whole country, but they're very, very particular in where they still have this type of signage to install, and they do feel that, yes, we could have a large long unit sign on the ground, but because that's due to the sophistication, the design intent, it's very, it was, or that's good for the brand, it's not, maybe project brand.
Thank you again.
How many square feet are you exceeding right now? I couldn't figure it out through the map. So the project would be allowed sixty square feet of wall signs, and overall, they're going to be adding one hundred and twenty, that includes the two blade signs, or projecting signs, as well as one sign on the leasing building, the leasing office, or some of that sort of, that's a, that's a wall mounted on the, on the interior side. So they've basically changed the project entirely after they got approved in twenty sixteen, and now they're coming back and doing this, and they just, it's just a little bit smart, regardless of that. I actually don't mind the concept of the blade sign hanging out there, I don't know that it's appropriate early on, right there, the blade sign, it does add that sense of sophistication, right there, on Grand Avenue, you have, there's not much going on there, and then asking to double what has been, already been approved, starts to really make our sign ordinance move, because with that building over there, industrial park, heritage building, we change the whole, one ounce as well for signs, and it just seems like, why have an ordinance if we're not going to stick to it at a certain point? But I, I haven't decided, but I'm, I'm just kind of, put this outside, if you look at it, regardless of this, but we do have a ordinance, and it is there, and they do like the blade sign, and it's not like we're asking for three feet, or, you know, ten percent more, we're asking for a hundred percent more of a lot of space, I don't, just a thought.
Thank you, I, actually, I just, no, does anybody else have a question? Thank you so much. And does anybody else in the audience wish to speak, or is this a closed public hearing? In their favor, there are going to be two at twelve square feet instead of three at thirty-two square feet, that are reduced in that, and three, if it was one per building, they're doing two total per side. I'm not that fond of the signs either, but it is right across from the train station, and it almost lends itself to that feel. We're, we're going to have to face the fact that we had to modify all of our standards through supplemental regulations, and this project is going to be here, and all these people are going to take the train to work, they're going to take mass transportation, so I don't know why they're going to be driving by, they're going to sign, they're going to be pedaling their bikes as fast as they can to keep the traffic, I, I haven't thought about the signs, I'm not that in favor of it, however, it's one of those things that is future.
I, I got to clarify that, the design is fine, I mean, I do like the signs, but I just don't think it's the proper application, but I just need to clarify that.
This is really tough, because I know Commissioner Cohen's background, and, you know, he's, he's having some concerns here, and, and also Commercial Roma with, with, you know, we're doubling the amount of sign that would normally be required, be allowed. I, I guess my concern, and maybe this is for another question for staff, I know that we're closed public hearing, but, so the downtown specific plan only allows sixty square feet of wall sign for a project? Because I'm looking at this, and it says also, one per building wall, per sign thirty square feet, but the entire project can only have sixty square feet? We got three big buildings here, and so it seems a little disproportionate to, to, you know, what the requirement is, I guess. I guess that's the concern that I've got, in trying to meet the code, but also looking at, at what's being requested.
Of course, so a couple of things, first, the, the standards here, they are for residential projects in the downtown specific plan as far as the wall signs. Now that said, the plan development process is available for situations like this, where you have these buildings that are sufficiently large that, that thirty square foot sign saying Roman would be probably appropriate for the top of a building, I'm looking at you, Commissioner Cohen, instead of the sign, but, you know, they'll probably be appropriate for the top of the building, but there are four sides on three buildings, and you're not going to do every side of every building. It feels that the blade signs are in scale, as far as what should be placed on a building of that size, of that height, and that kind of mass, but, yeah, the, the plan development, I think, is where it is really intended to allow these deviations, and it's not seen as a way around the code, it's seen as a way to provide something that's appropriate for a project.
Thank you, and I really do like that explanation. Personally, I, I really don't have a problem with the blade sign, I, I think it's kind of neat. Yeah, I know that, you know, a lot of times it's, it's more depicted on hotels and those sort of things, but I kind of like it, I kind of like how it does kind of tie into the train station and the transit station running store. My concern, of course, is the glare, you know, but if we've got some assurances, not only from the applicant, that, that they'll make sure that they address this if it does be, become a concern, and of course, the city staff is, is okay with this. You know, and I really don't have a problem with this. I, I think the size, going from thirty square feet up to forty-eight square feet, it, it seems proportionate to the building, in, in my opinion. Kind of like it, I think it looks good, so that's my two cents.
I, I thought it kind of looked kind of cool, I kind of imagined myself just driving by, would it, would, would I say, oh, I'm on a grand right here, because, you know, he's here, the sign is there, I don't know if you would do that, but I can totally see why the marketing people would, like, envision that. It's too bad that at ten o'clock it has to go out, because if I'm driving by at eleven o'clock, it might kind of wake me up, so it's cool, you know, but it's necessary, because that was my concern too, once I saw the signs, oh, there's a couple of windows right there, and that's going to be an issue for the people that live there. But I like one of the ideas of a shutter and things like that, and having to go off at ten or eleven o'clock, whatever, I recall, the stipulation is the requirement, but that building is huge, so I think the size is proportionate to it, I think it's, it's nice, and we had an interesting feeling, I look forward, if it's approved, to drive by at night, I also agree with your name, I don't know about that, but anyway, that's personal, I haven't, there's nothing we can do about that, but those are my.
I, I just have one other question of staff. Now that we're putting up these signs on the building, is there adequate structure to support the wind shear of this size? Because I know that we've had problems in other areas, especially in the historic district, even putting a little bitty sign top.
Sure, the building division has been, has reviewed or is, is looking at the structural drawings and knowing, making sure that this will be fast complete or.
Structure. Okay. Anybody like to make a motion? I will make a motion to go ahead and approve PHG nineteen zero zero seven six, as it reads here, and that's twenty twenty oh two.
Commissioner Wyler, if you may know your question doesn't work.
Who said it does?
Let us go ahead and make a change there, no problem, or if you, yeah, please, Commissioner Wyler.
We have six, yes. So that PHG nineteen zero zero seven six and twenty twenty oh two passes. Okay, oral communications, seeing nobody else in the audience? Any comments from the commissioners?
Yeah, I just had one question, probably from someone stronger. Commissioner Watson, since he's had to resign unfortunately, are we going to be, or is city council going to appoint a new commissioner here in the near future? Because his term wasn't over for another couple of years.
couple of years.
Correct. He was midterm, so he had another two years remaining in his position. The vacancy will be filled concurrent with the recruitment that is now underway to fill the terms that are up this cycle period. I believe there's three commissioners that are up and are potential reappointed if they choose to volunteer at a time. Hopefully they do. So the, it just makes sense to run both concurrents. So there'll be four positions that are going to be filled through this recruitment period that I think the council selects and mark, I believe.
Just out of curiosity, is the format going to be the same, do you know? I mean, the last couple of times, it's been kind of an open forum, more or less, with the city council?
Yes, I, I don't know the answer to that. I know that their interview process will probably likely be preserved, but I don't know the process in which mayor and council will use to appoint.
Can I have one question for you? Now, latitudes thirty-two at this site, there's projecting arms over second, facing city's, was that, did they have an intent in putting the blade sign up there and they just never did, or it's approved, or it's obvious that something didn't get finished there?
I'm not aware of any application for projecting signs. There might be other architectural elements, so I'll have to take a look at it on the way out.
Two poles sticking out.
Interesting. Yeah, I'm not aware of any incomplete application. Our building inspection team would be a little bit more proactive in making sure that jobs weren't halfway completed.
Okay. No further comments? We'll return to our next meeting.
The January twenty-eighth meeting will be canceled, so we'll be meeting February eighth. And the calendar